My time is now 6:31 PM. I'd like to call this meeting the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District to order the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or agreed upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education advertised this meeting on September 9th, 2020 in the Asbury Park grass in the Star Ledger. This notice was sent to the nearest book clerks of the borough of Madawan and township of Aberdeen and the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. This notice was also placed on the district's website. Can you do roll call, please? Ms. Sescully? Ms. Reinheim? Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Ms. Montaln?
Here.
Ms. Osborne?
Here.
Ms. Vallen?
Yeah.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Friedman?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, please stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible).
As we have been doing, I want to go to the executive session first. Ms. Sescully, can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear us? I'd like to start this meeting as we have before and go into executive session first. Be it resolved in a closed session, be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and legal matters, the subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of executive session is estimated to be approximately one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business, action will take place. Can I have a motion and a second to go into executive session?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Can I have a motion to reopen the Board of Education public session?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First, let me apologize to everybody that that went long. There's obviously a lot going on and approximating the time proved to be somewhat difficult. So I do apologize for that. In regards to the presence report, I've been giving a lot of thought as to what to say. And when I do this twice a month, it always changes in terms of how much thought, if it's going to be celebratory. This one was really hard. I think that last week, I went through every emotion that I could as a parent, as a board member, as a member of the community. It was amazing to see the school buses coming into the high school. It was amazing to see the lights in those kids' eyes who went in to school. I understand and take ownership that not everything has gone perfectly the first week of school. It typically doesn't. It's not because we aren't trying, it's not because we don't care, it's just because there are some things you can't plan for. In this case, more so than ever, we are in unprecedented times, and I hate saying it as often as I find myself saying it, but everything is being done for the first time. It was unfortunate. Sometimes you can only learn from your mistakes by making them, and you get better from it. I have tried as a board president, as a board member, to always increase communication so that everybody was on the same page. And I think what was missing was the communication that where we started last week as a district is only step one in where we hoped to get, and that would be for an in-person traditional classroom as most of us parents envisioned. In saying that, I want to take a minute and go back to where this word started in August when we had to come up with a plan to reopen, and we were given a set of rules that we had to follow to reopen. It had to be in person, a hybrid plan was approved, it was presented, the date for that was the first week in August. We had hoped, we released it to the public, we voted on it during the blackout. The community had a week for feedback, to read it, took that feedback, it was a go. And what that meant, and I think it's important that we all take a moment to think about everybody who's involved here and the shoes that they walk in, because we don't know what other people's situations were. Parents who work, parents who don't work, had to start planning, and that's why we tried to get the most accurate plan we could at the time out to the public as quickly as we could. Parents had to start negotiating with their employers, were finding money to hire a nanny, talking to their mothers, their in-laws, whoever it was that needed to come in and work with their kids or watch their kids. We had the principals and administrators who had to start scheduling these children. We had transportation administrators who had to start working on the transportation routes. And everybody started that as soon as that plan was out there, and that was the beginning of August. Then, as everything seems to have gone since we have been under this pandemic, the script was changed. And the script was changed, and so we had to change. So on August 13th, we had a Q and A, and I believe it was that morning, there was a new executive order signed either that morning or the day before, 175, there were some guidelines that were released from the Department of Health. That again changed things. And I believe it was at that time we were allowed to possibly have full remote. Some of the dates I might be skewing a bit, but I believe it was at that time we were allowed to full remote as an option. I remember a couple of people had come to that Q and A asking what our response was going to be to that information that was released that morning. And we couldn't give you that answer because it had been released that morning, but we did give you the answers in regards to the goals that we absolutely expected and still expect to reach, and that is back to a normal, what we know as a normal school day and classroom setting. So August 13th, rules change, we work on something that still gets these kids in a classroom, that still gets life one step closer to normal. And we do that, and we change the plan again. The night before the high school has a parent meeting, the principals again have to change the schedule. The script has been changed, and it significantly. Transportation has to do new routes. Parents have to replan. Everybody is going through all of these different stressors at a time where you keep waking up and saying, can I take one more thing? And we're all at that level, and it is all very, very difficult. But one thing that this board has stayed true to, and this district has stayed true to, which is to get the kids back into the school, to be on a normal or as normal a path as we can be, because that's what's best for, one, their education, and two, their mental health. Some parents would say it's best for their mental health. And so we started the first week of school, it was not as what we expected as parents. My son being hybrid came home, told me what the day was like, I could see that there was going to be some issues in terms of explanations and expectations. The next hybrid went through, and then today, again, another my son's second full day or second hybrid day. And changes are being made, and we are getting closer to that normal, where some of the live instruction that we told parents would happen is happening. And live instruction is taking place in two ways, though I want to be very clear that there's live instruction as though I'm talking to the parents who are here, and I'm talking to the parents who are out there. Both are live, but only one is in person. And the kids are getting both of that. We are one of a few districts that weren't able to stay this way, whereas a lot of other districts have closed and have been full remote. We were able to get our kids in and keep moving up our staircase, getting us back to that normal. I know, because I'm tired of saying it, I know that the parents are tired of hearing it, but I really truly appreciate the patience. I apologize for not fully explaining or getting that communication out. Obviously, as soon as we saw there were issues, there were things that we've tried to do as a district to increase that communication, including the early evening video from the high school principal, the back-to-school nights, the increased communication from the district itself, and we are doing this all while we are trying to make it better. Every day, the goal is to make it better and improve on it. So with that, I do want to thank people for their patience. I certainly understand and empathize with the people who are here and out there as to the frustration that we have all endured. This board represents a nice array of what our communities look like. We have working parents on this board, and believe me, the administrators here, how the working parents feel, and they take that into consideration, and that's something that they value highly. And I don't want the community to think that they are being diminished or were somehow tricked, because we are working towards the goal of returning back to what we all understand as a normal. With that, I would turn it over to Dr. Mike Lefter for his report.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Just to echo that a little bit, first, I would like to thank all of the parents and the students for their patience over the last two weeks as we reopen schools after being out for over six months in a completely new environment. Our mission is to get things into as normal a situation as possible. And having said that, I would like to thank our staff, every person that works in this district who worked tirelessly to get us to this point so that we could open and stay open and move towards a full hybrid in the coming weeks. Without their hard work at every level, we would not be sitting here tonight talking about being in a hybrid. And as I said, my thanks also to the families, the students, for their patience as we go through this. And if there is anything as we move forward, please reach out as we all work together to get to where we want to go. And thank you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Liebman.
Thank you, Dr. Micah. Each year, the district is required to present a board self-assessment on our HIV practices and procedures. There are eight categories that we grade ourselves on. This includes training opportunities, curriculum, investigations, and reporting procedures all related to HIV. Each of our seven buildings compiles their responses. I share that information with the Department of Education. They tell me if the results check, come back with us. Then we post our report card on the district webpage in the public space. This is important, the data that we're going to talk about, this is from the 2018-2019 school year, where we was one full year behind from the reporting. The district score is not out of 100 points, it's out of a cumulative 78 points. So our score is 69 out of 78, if you were to translate that into a typical report card grade, I think it would be B+. So the purpose of the report card is to give us a chance to reflect on how we can improve the practices of HIV. So there are a couple of areas that we saw that needed our attention. One of them is training of our anti-bullying specialists. Those are the staff members in the buildings who do the investigation, will come through either from students, staff, or parent. So to address this, in last fall, knowing that we would have to lose attention to this, we did bring in trainers specifically to certify our ABS team on how to do effective investigations. Another program that, another part of the report card that needs some attention were program initiatives. So what we had done, we had put back the last, started last year, we had lifted our meeting meetings, our restored practices, and additional professional development for staff. The updates through the 2019-2020 school year are currently being tabulated, and as the year goes on, we'll have updates for the board as that process continues. Dr. Micah, back to HIV update.
Thank you. I'll turn the page over to the board president.
Mr. Bobbender, can you take us through curriculum and instruction, please?
Sure, good evening. We have no travel nor any action items tonight. Item number one, as we move to part B, is asking the Board of Education to approve the partnership agreement between the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District, the Keys Academy, and the Florida Virtual Schools to provide blended learning online course options as needed for the 2020-2021 school year, costs and accounts as indicated. Item number two is asking the board to approve the esports, a competitive gaming club. This club offers middle school and high school students with the opportunity to engage in organized multiplayer video game competitions in other school districts. These will be non-mildive games, age-appropriate, monitored by a club advisor, and the team will be a member of the Florida State Esports. See presentation on that, with additional information will be provided at the next board meeting by our Director of Curriculum, Dr. Rawls. Item number three is the revised approval for the 20 summer 2020 curriculum guide updates, which is Curriculum Instruction Attachment Number One, and that is all for curriculum instruction.
Can I get a motion in a second to accept the curriculum and instruction agenda?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board concerning the curriculum and instruction agenda?
Ms. Freeman, I just have a question.
You got, just one question. Mr. Bobbender, is that money for the keys, is that grant money or is that Madawka?
That is grant money, that is specifically the keys.
Alright, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? On the board? Seeing none.
Sorry?
Seeing none, Mr. President, can you take us through special services?
Sure, good evening, everyone. Under item number one, we're asking for board approval of the revision to the originally approved contract on 6/15/2020 with all parent therapy services. Their contract was updated to state the following. The parties acknowledge that from time to time, therapists employed by the agency may agree to provide services at students' homes. In that event, the agency and the therapists shall begin to have satisfied themselves that entering into the student's home is sufficiently safe and release the board, its members, employees, agents, and representatives from any persons of injury or illness to the therapy arising from such visits. I'd like to note that this revision to the contract with all parent therapies is for students that are full mount, it is not for the district's students in district. Under item number two, we're asking for the board to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Madawan Regional School District and the Community YMCA, which will provide counseling and social services for students in the district and the Keys Academy effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. No cost. Under item number three, we're asking for board approval for the following students to attend an added district placement for the 2020-2021 school year. The school is listed along with the cost and its effective dates, or the September 2020 through June 30, 2021. That concludes special services.
Can I get a motion in a second to accept the special services agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll listen. Okay. Are there any comments or questions concerning the special services agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Liebman, can you take us through personnel?
Yes. Personnel, section A, reservations to retirees, two staff members listed in retirement with their effective dates. Section B, leave of absence for 2020-21. Staff members are listed with their types of duties and effective dates. This is on the bottom of page 106 and continues on top of page 206. Under section C, equipments, number one, new hires for 2021, there are placeholders where we hope to have some of this built in for action for the rank. Item number two, salary adjustments for 2021, two staff members listed with their respective degrees, this is simply going across the guide. Item number three, college student observers, teachers and interns for 2021, there are six names listed with the universities and their faculty, teachers, and school areas. There's one intern, and there are others are student observers. Item number four, curriculum instruction, one staff member listed, we have a staff member participating in creating virtual professional development, determined to the staff. Item number five, extracurricular activities for the 2020 school year, at the moment, one staff member enlisted under athletic activities. Non-athletic activities, this continues on page four, those are placeholders, will have additional names and activities listed for rank, and then one staff member enlisted under hourly activities. Item number six, mentors, the additional mentors, at the moment. Item number seven, substitute recommendations for the 2020 school year, this is on the bottom of page four, continues on top of page 506. These are current staff members who are instructional assistants to district employees who hold a New Jersey substitute certificate. Item number eight, staff re-changes for 2021, staff members that are listed with their current and new assignments and location changes effective dates. Just one note, the first name, Colin Burden, she actually didn't come off for the rank, she did not do the staff re-change for her. On page six, item number nine, no additional names under summer curriculum writing, D, other, no PIB reports for this meeting. And item B, the following staff members that are listed, earned first of attendance for the 2019-2020 school year. That concludes personnel.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for a first and second for the personnel agenda?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I have one. Ms. Bobbender?
My one question is that we have teachers who are taking medical leave that are instructional teachers. How are the parents and students to notify, and what is the advancement notification to them as far as the changing of teacher or guidance counselor, well, permission notification for the parents?
The staff members, kind of like we typically would be on the board agenda, in some cases through approval. Aside that, that is communicated through the personnel office to the building principal, and the building principal proceeds that has to the rest of the parents. So there shouldn't be schedule changes or a substitute that's put in, that gets communicated out.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because I, fortunately, I have four children in district, and I know that guidance counselors wasn't notified until after, so starting, we had a teacher who resigned, as starting, the children were logging on and didn't have access to the teacher. So that's why I'm asking you, when are the parents to be notified if these things, because the children are waiting for their teacher, or the parents who are notifying guidance counselor who was on returning the leave, before they receive a here for the information, when is it to be notified and given out to the teacher, I mean, to the parents and students?
I will have a discussion with our administration tomorrow to make sure that that does not happen again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments concerning the personnel agenda? Mr. Ferry, you want to take us through finance, please?
Yes, thank you, good evening again. Starting off on page one of four for finance, number one is the monthly payroll and bills list. Number two is the board budget transfers. Number three is the board secretary's report. Number four, this is a designation of use of carryover funds to support the Republic High School, as presented by Mr. Bobbender before. Number five is designation of non-public funds for, excuse me, non-public school funds. Number six is the use of MOESC for certain non-public services. Number seven is designation of staff that we will be funded share time between ESSA and the local operating budget. Number eight and number nine are two change orders, credits coming back to the district for different electrical projects. Number 10 is the application for the grant funds to the energy standards measures program through the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, where the district is looking to obtain about $120,000 worth of services and upgrades for about $23,000. Number 11 is another student, non-resigned student to be recommended to the board. And number 12 is the record of the fire drills and lockdown drill in August pursuant to the state requirements. And that concludes finance.
Can I get a motion in a second to accept the finance agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments concerning the finance agenda?
I have a question. I know we talked about the safety measures, can I turn on your phone? It is, okay. But I also see that we are mandated to do fire drills. Can we walk through how that process is going to happen this month, first one?
So, great question, Ms. Osborne. This is actually something that the department that just kind of released in guidance last week. A few of the folks on the administrative team were actually participating as part of the guidance, we took off our glasses, we took it off. So the issue is, like you said, there's a requirement by statute that certain drills be performed every month. For sure, you have to do at least one fire drill, and then there's a secondary drill that moves the kind of the cycle through the course of the year. The department that, yes, last week, like I said, presented a webinar to districts on how to potentially approach those kinds of issues. Basic concept is that districts need to take into consideration the emergency protocols for student study, oral, and all three of those apply. What I mean by that is full-time, in-person, hybrid, and virtual. So this is something that we're kind of reviewing with our admin team this week as part of admin council, and then at that point, we will provide some additional guidance to the board. Obviously, because of the nature of security, you can't get into a lot of detail, but in essence, those drills are to be, based upon the guidance of the O E, good to be performed just like any other year. Dr. Mc.
I was going to say, is that the same thing for the buses?
Correct. So evacuation drills are basically the same thing, and the most common question that we get is, you know, even if my child doesn't necessarily ride on a bus, why does he or she have to perform a bus evacuation drill? And typically, it's because in the event that a student participates in a field trip, athletic event, whatever it is, they need to know what the protocols are in the event that there's an emergency and how to evacuate the bus properly.
Thank you.
So just to add, so for instance, for those students that are on complete remote, there would be what we would call a tabletop discussion in one of their classrooms virtually, where they would discuss those things.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments concerning finance? Seeing none, I just want to make sure that, because I can't really see them, if the board members who are here via Zoom, did any board did any board members there, Mr. Ayer, Mr. Burdenham, Mrs. Solly, have any questions concerning any of the agenda items? With that, I would open it up to public comments relating to agenda items only. We do have some public here. So if there are any comments related to any of the agenda items, I would just ask if you could stand and just give us your name, address, and then whatever question you have. Does anybody in our personal audience?
Do I have a question necessarily about the agenda? But if you have my own personal questions, is this the time to ask?
It would be, we're almost there.
Yeah, okay.
It's towards here. Are there any agenda questions on our group chat?
Question regarding Wi-Fi in the chat, regarding classrooms and educational environments, teacher signs. Then we need to check the public comments that came out of bounds. Hybrid plan, universal instruction. Doesn't look like there's anything presenting through the actual agenda items at this point.
Can we take action on any agenda items?
Curriculum instruction doesn't have anything. Special services, personnel, no. Don't believe we have any actions of the agenda.
Okay.
No, three minutes. So no action of the agenda, so everything will be set for the verbal action meeting later this month.
Any unfinished business from any other board members? Any new business from any board members of administration? Do we have a student rep that will be here for the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so that's. So now, it's public comments related to anything.
My name is Lori Weber. My daughter Emily is a senior at the high school. And I think I speak for many parents at that high school when I say this. I understand as a parent and as a teacher that there's really no content or academic instruction at first with the school. And Friedman, I understand that you're saying that live instruction will be, the plan will be changed. However, I know that many parents are disappointed with how the real-time school unfolds and are worried that our children will not be receiving true academic direct instruction as promised. As per the back to school hub, it says in the website, in classrooms, students will remain in their classrooms for the duration of the school day and will receive instruction from teachers certified in each content area. There will be constant instruction taking place in the classroom by at least four teachers per day. Students will indeed social distancing and will be enforcing a careful procedure for leaving and re-entering the classroom. Furthermore, Mr. Ayer, on September 9, he's video screen cast taped. When students come into the building, you should come with questions and items you need to dress. You should be coming in and interacting with teachers in the classroom. The teachers are coming in prepared to start discussing the content with you. So it is extremely important if you have questions to show up to the room ready to go. The teachers recommend that students have questions to start Googled up. So when they get to the room, you are able to start asking the teachers and it provides support and instruction necessary to be successful. The only way we can ensure that students are going to be successful in real-time classes to take advantage of the in-person services. And it further says, eventually, the goal is to get into a wisdom where students are coming in consistently with questions that the teachers who are in the classroom tend to address. By coming to school and generating a document by force of questions is perfectly important to give everybody an academic experience. But my question is to you. Is this the real way real-time teaching will be? Students should come into school with questions on a document and ask their questions to random teachers in a room who are not certified in that content area. Mr. Ayer repeatedly states during the screen cast video that the teachers will soon be rolling out their content. But in our opinion, it's that hybrid model is not acceptable. The class teaching is basically, in our opinion, we weren't licensed at all. Furthermore, this new normal, we understand it's not normal during the pandemic. We don't be not prepared fully for teaching. I myself as well. And we're not, we know it's the learning process for all of us. Mr. Ayer says on September 10, I realize students in classrooms, not with a teacher, the schedule is challenging, but we have to do what we can do to make it work. Students have to come with questions. They have to be engaged students. So our biggest concern really is, when is the academic direct instruction going to happen by real teachers who are certified in their subject area? Because I believe that if my daughter is taking calculus, that there needs to be some kind of direct instruction going on. And so that's my question.
Mr. Baller, can we get to that?
The first week of school was designed that they will be connecting with their students. Everyone was coming back for the first time. We are just now in the first day of our second week of school. Keeping in mind, we have students on a cohort. So essentially, this is the third day of school for the students that are part of that A-day cohort. So we said, within that first week, those first five days of instruction against another student. In short, to answer your question, the model in place is that there are, there is live instruction taking place from the content area teachers. That is taking place in the morning. They have academic support from the content certified teacher. The students have logged in to a Google Meet. That teacher will be there to provide that instruction to the students. Then they're working on their assignments with the teacher live in the room to provide support. In the afternoon, that teacher, whether that's their chemistry teacher, whether that teacher gives them that content, they provide that direct instruction through the Google Meet. So that is the model right now, being that we are limiting transitions within the building. But the students are getting the academic support component as well as the live academic support, our live direct instruction from their content area teacher. But that first week of school is intentionally not to immerse them in content when they first come back. The goal is to involve them in activities that they get familiar students and build those relationships.
Can I say something else?
Sure.
So when you say direct support, so if my daughter is in school and she has questions with anatomy and there's a gym teacher there in her classroom, how is she getting direct support there?
That teacher is available, an anatomy teacher, through the Google Hangout, that they can ask that teacher a question. So that teacher will be there at the beginning of that lesson to provide the introduction of the lesson. That teacher is available. They may not be in that classroom. They may be in a different classroom because we're not having teachers transition classrooms. But they are available for questions and support in the morning. In the afternoon, that chemistry teacher is providing live direct instruction to the students via Google Meet.
Live direct instruction is not over Google Meet. It's live direct instruction.
Just out of respect for whoever's question it is, everybody will have time to ask. But just out of respect for whoever's question it is, I just would like to give it to one speaker.
Okay, so that was two special needs. My concern was if she has a question and the teacher in December is a gym teacher and she asked the gym teacher, you know, I don't understand how to do this. I mean, that's the direct instruction. If it's a live teacher in front of you and you ask a question, and you should have some kind of back and forth conversation and discussion about the material, the content.
At the high school level, there is a content area teacher. So it may not be the chemistry teacher, but there's a content certified teacher in that content area there for support. The teacher is available and providing that direct instruction at the onset of the lesson via Google Meet because there may not be that teacher of record standing in front of the room. In some cases, it might be. And then that teacher is providing that direct instruction through the Google Hangout. In that time, that teacher's not presently in that classroom with the students. And then in the afternoon, when they are providing that Google Meet through that live synchronous instruction.
Yes, I understand that. But I think that the way it was presented to us, that's not what we wanted to do. Do you believe that there was going to be the teacher teaching directly the content area, the teacher?
I don't mean to interrupt, but can I ask if you can turn this way and we'll keep this mic on?
No.
You know what I'll do? I'll push it up.
Maybe can we stand by the door and take the mask off so it's clear? We can't get the, I don't think the microphone.
I think we're all loud enough that this is my indoor voice. So they want to. I think they can probably hear them, no?
So I understand what you're saying to me now, but the way it rolls out to us, we feel as though as if we were at this length. We felt as though there was going to be direct instruction in a classroom with a certified teacher in that content area. That is our concern. Me and I'm sure many other parents as well have that same concern.
And in part, our plan was designed with health and safety. And as the guidelines came out regarding social distancing, we needed to limit those transitions within the school days to ensure the health and safety of the students. So with that, we had to limit transitions and limit the number of students that can be in a room. So in a class, a chemistry class that had 25 students, we cannot have all 25 students in that room. So just by that nature of ensuring that the students are not transitioning and the teachers are not transitioning, the model that we had to put in place to ensure the health and safety was the model that we currently have.
And I understand that now as you're explaining it to me, but I'm saying prior to this school year, it was not explained to us that way. So that is our concern.
Just to address that concern, like I said, the president's report, a lot of this was fluid. And so the goal is to get to that normal, what we as parents think of when we think of in-person learning, the teacher at the front of the room who's teaching the lesson, not explaining how we get them. And for that, I apologize. We have certainly tried to hit all of the points that we wanted to make sure, got out to ensure that the kids got back safely, that there was a mechanism for them to stay in the buildings. So all I can say is that we are learning from what we did and we are trying every day. And I think we actually are improving on it every day. But I get it. And I wish I could rewind it and do it all over again. But unfortunately, we are learning as we grow.
I accept full responsibility for the delivery and I apologize for that. And I assure you that we will work tirelessly to make sure that that does not happen again. That falls on my shoulders. And as I said, I take full responsibility for it not being clear enough. And I assure you that we will work, like I said, tirelessly to ensure that that does not happen again.
Can I go next?
Sure. I have more than one question. Is that acceptable? I'm going to put this chair over there and put the microphone on it if that works.
I just say thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry.
Is it on?
It's on.
Okay. She just had it.
My name is Michelle Laxwell. I have a teacher in the high school. I'm just going to ask, I have a lot to go over. So just to go with you. If you don't want.
Can you press the button?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if this is redundant to what was just asked, but it was under my impression that the students would be grouped together based on the classes that they took. I mean, it doesn't appear that way. It appears as if they are grouped alphabetically. Is that the case?
That is the cohort model. So depending on their class name, that is the day they will be coming in, either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday.
All right. Is anything that we've done to change that?
Well, right now, we have to adhere by the social distancing guidelines. So in order to limit the number based on the size of the room, we cannot have more than many faces, 10 students in a classroom. So that would be dependent on the restrictions being eased to ease the social distancing guidelines currently in place.
Students brought a question on chromosome today and attempted to sign their dates on the email sent with the password yesterday. That did not work. When they attempted to sign on, they received an authentication failed notice and had to, and had an unpredictable day and had an unpredictable day and ended up using their phones.
Your, your, yes, that, that, we, we had technology issues today. I spoke with the IT director directed by what happened today. We also had even the lower grades as well. So that has been addressed and I'm hopeful that tomorrow that that's not going to be the case.
Um, I have a question. If a student has positive for COVID, how will the district handle identifying the color? Will it be similar to the license letter that would be sent out by school or? Would you have a model for that?
We, we do have a model, there's obviously HIPAA laws that are involved in notification and things like that, so we're following the CDC and the, and the local health department guidelines in, in getting the notification out.
Does that include identifying what grade they're in?
If, if that's, if that's the case necessary and after talking with the health department, then yes, that would be the case, yes. So there have been some cases across the state in the last couple of days where we have seen in some cases, a couple of grade levels switched to remote, some cases just one grade level, and those are all coming off of the, whatever county they're in after they're speaking with the county health department. So that's how we would make that decision.
Okay, the next topic I want to address is the senior sunrise and obviously the photo. Do you plan on sending the same letter out regardless of any photo received or may be carried to that student, staff, and faculty that be reached in maskless? My feeling is protocol needs to be consistent, it's only known.
So I, I understand that there are a lot of people upset about, about what transpired. We did not go looking for the information, this was presented to us on Labor Day and we had to make a quick decision as to what we were going to do about it and we had several options. And after about three or four hours of discussion with the county health department and our legal counsel, we decided that knowing what we knew, with only hours to decide what to do, the safest course of action would be what we did, sending out the letter, so. I, I understand people are upset about it, but under the circumstances and it being brought to us, we believe that that was the safest thing to do at the time.
I just, I have a little more to say about that, so just go with it.
Absolutely.
Was this school district aware of the tradition of senior sunrise was going to take place?
Was I aware of that?
Was the district?
Was the district aware of it?
Was anybody in the school district in the?
Well, I can't speak forever, but I was aware that it was taking place.
Okay, the, uh, it says in the first paragraph of the letter that was sent out on September 7th, we understand that the senior sunrise event has been an annual tradition for many years, but we would have hoped that they would have adhered to their COVID-19 distancing health and safety requirements. So it does say that you were.
I, I'm aware of the tradition, I did not know it took place that day, if, if that's what you're asking me.
And nobody thought, nobody thought to say, hey, you know, is that happening this year? Should we reach out and tell them what our feelings are or what they should be doing or what we anticipate or what we expect from them all?
I, I, I honestly did not and I apologize for that.
I would just add, that's not a district tradition, that's not something the district organizes or holds, so I, I don't know what, you know, we would have been able, it's not something we would take off.
Okay, alright, so let's just cover the criteria for quarantine guidelines in a minute till you answer my other questions. Violation of the CDC requires people to quarantine within close contact with someone who has COVID-19. If you were in close contact counts, if you were within six feet of someone with COVID-19 for a total of 15 minutes or more, you provided care to someone who was sick, you had direct physical contact with the person, you hugged or kissed them, you shared eating or drinking utensils, face new, coughed, or something, that respiratory problem is on you. And we know the order has included in quarantining the list of states that if you're traveling from, you should come quarantine. You indicated in the letter that was sent out on Monday that you contacted the Mount County Board of Health, who then advised you that absent evidence of these students are symptomatic or carry the virus, there is no need to close the school. Why would you think that a maskless photo would necessitate such extremism as closing the school?
Like I said, after, after consulting with our board attorney, we believe that that was the safest thing to do at the time.
What and any other advice could the Board of Health supply you?
Once again, those go into personnel matters and, and I'm not at liberty to discuss them, I'm okay.
Did they indicate their stance on the ramifications of the proximity of the photo?
Could you repeat that, please?
Did they indicate their position on the ramifications of the proximity of the photo?
They refer to the executive order as if being within six feet of each other, masks should be worn.
But it's not anything that's listed to quarantine.
No, and like I said, that, that decision was made after consulting with our board attorney and that's the safest thing to do under the circumstances at the time.
And did they recommend to the school board that, to the district or the school board that they quarantine?
We had discussions on how to proceed moving forward and that was in part of the discussion, but like I said, for privacy reasons, I can't go into the specific discussion.
You, that's not really, that's not really, if you made a decision, be excited for me to receive, that you should be able to tell me whether or not they came out and said, yes, I recommend you quarantine or no, there's no reason for quarantines to take place because none of the children or the students rather were symptomatic or sick or exhibiting signs of COVID.
After discussion with our board attorney and not knowing any of those variables based off of the governor's executive order and our discussion, we deem that the safest thing to do was, was to put that out.
Alright, I'm just, I have something on my phone, I just wanted to, I texted the major's COVID-19 line and asked the following question. I said, are people allowed to take a quick group photo outside facing forward without a mask, say 40 people on a beach? Prior to the photo, all practice social distancing and wear masks, no one was sick or symptomatic. Our personal group photo is okay, yes, there seems to be some confusion and I would like further clarification, letting this bar keeps birthday parties or gatherings. And they said that they would get back to me, which they did. And they continued, with all the events eliciting your question, facial masks are a requirement according to the COVID-19 control hub. It is a gray area with masks and picture taking, it is best to use your best judgment in this area. Just make sure that those are participating, that those who are participating are comfortable taking pictures without masks. If it is a business, you may want to look into a waiver as far as liability is concerned. So then I said, not a business, a group of friends innocently putting together, innocently getting together, preserving a good memory and a crappy view. And they said, well, that would be best to you, you're better good. So with that in mind, there were more than 38 that attended the sunrise and obviously those not comfortable posing for a, posing for the photo did not participate. On your crisis one questionnaire. One of the questions is, within the past 14 days, has your child had in close physical contact, six feet or closer, for at least 10 minutes with a person that is known to have laughter, confirmed COVID-19, or with anyone that has symptoms consistent with COVID-19? Right, that's a question on, it doesn't say, forget a mask, it says someone that hot tested positive. And on the district hub regarding quarantine, it says quarantine if you have been in close contact with a person who has COVID-19, none of the students in that group had it, are symptomatic. Okay, but that still does not answer the question. The question is where? Does it say like the school, district?
It doesn't say it anywhere.
Exactly, thank you. Where in the school reopen plan? That was the governor's plan, where in the school reopen plan does it state the matter one out of the New Jersey school district will be using social media and our photos to monitor that staff, faculty, and students who are adhering to the social distancing guidelines on their personal time and require them to call quarantine if they are not.
It, it doesn't say it anywhere.
Where in the New Jersey school board associations reopen plan does it state the school district should use social media and our photos to monitor that staff, faculty, and students who are adhering to the social distancing guidelines on their personal time and require them to quarantine?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
I, I was on that website, does. Where in the New Jersey Department of Education reopen plan, does it state the school district should use social media and our photos to monitor that staff, faculty, and the students who are adhering to the social distancing guidelines on their personal time?
It doesn't say it anywhere.
Ms. Lasco, were you asking what the authority is that would use to send out that letter?
Um, absolutely.
Okay, well, let's answer that.
I'm not done yet, I could just finish and then we can go on. Where in the CDC school reopen plan does it state the school district should use social media and our photos to monitor that staff, faculty, and students who are adhering to the social distancing guidelines on their personal time and require them to quarantine?
It doesn't say it anywhere, nor will we monitoring it, they sent to us.
Is there anything that recommends quarantine if all students meet the guidelines? Of not being sick, not being symptomatic, no one in the group?
It doesn't say that.
To me, this seems like an arbitrary decision based either on the guidelines or just the protocol.
It, it wasn't arbitrary, as I said before, we consulted with our board attorney, we consulted with the county health department and having safety as the paramount issue, the decision was made to, to put the letter out.
I just have a little more and then I'm finished. The reality is people will get sick, they're gonna get sick from work, doctor's office, birthday parties, weddings, the grocery store, public restrooms, we can go on and on. Current infection rate in New Jersey is less than where at 1%. Protocols in this school forbids any of the public areas that the children, the students, the staff, and the administration frequent on a daily basis, late evening. Total lockdown is officially over. I would like to tell you a few things about the quarantine that started in March and about the majority of students I know and have contact with. It was tough, I was worried every day there would be that one parent that would not stick to their nose and would let them roam free, every day. That never happened. Every day I worried my student was going to give me overtime without lockdown and how much of a parent could I really control and prevent them from doing what they wanted and seeing their friends? Every day. That never happened. They stayed home. A large number of them have worked since March through the entire lockdown. They have worked in grocery stores, restaurants, doctor's offices, and they have babysat. They continue to work and they continue to frequent every other public place that's around. By the end of the lockdown, isolation had hit everyone hard. There was a lack of motivation, despondency, crankiness, and then tears. Mid-June, a group of students fell together for a bike ride, the smiles on their faces and finally seeing each other couldn't have cracked concrete. It was priceless. Over the summer, they have a two-way barbecues, five minutes to beach, dinner outings, birthday parties in each other's company, as I am sure have other students, faculty, and staff. If you pursue the avenue of social media shame and whistleblowing or witch hunting, because that is exactly what it will become and you will have to pursue it with everyone, every student, every staff member, every faculty member, and everybody. You need to clarify to them what and where you have the authority from to reach that far. In this time where so many have lost and with so much, the students need each other now more than ever. You will have stolen the last thread of normalcy they have to hold on to and they need each other right now. The governor's road reopen statement, the tools are in place for hybrid and hopefully eventual in-class instruction sooner than later. We cannot plan on everything, let's not fail, let's not plan to fail, let's move forward and successfully in school. I'm gonna just sit back and we can address this.
Ms. Lasco, I'm not sure that the question that you asked or that I thought you were getting to was answered and that's whether or what authority did the district act under in creating that letter and added restriction. Our board attorney is here virtually, Mr. Rubin, and I would ask Mr. Rubin if you could answer that question from Ms. Lasco.
Well, I'll try to address that chat, and I've made your all the questions.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. We can't hear you. Mr. Rubin, you can talk.
Okay, David. Hello, can folks hear me now?
Yes.
Freeman, I think you're muted, can I, can somebody just indicate whether folks can hear me now? Is that a pop up?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't know if this will be responsive to the question I was asked, but let me just share a little bit of what we were working through on, on Monday. It was a holiday and, you know, we were not, as the superintendent indicated, nobody in this district was honoring anything, as I indicated before, as I said, I was asked to repeat myself. I think everybody involved in our discussion on Monday, whether it was before, spending Labor Day with their family and friends, we were not honoring anything, we were not looking for anything, but we were presented with a photograph of a large group of students closely together, not wearing masks, and we had a couple of decisions to make. We had several options, as the superintendent indicated, one of them was just to forget about it, go about our businesses and nothing happened. One is to ring the alarm bells and find some reason, look for some reason to shut down schools, which I think wasn't necessary at all, after speaking with county health authorities. We're aware of pronouncements by our state health officials, not the CDC, but state health officials, that large crowds gathered together in close proximity without wearing masks poses a health risk. It's because of those sorts of gatherings that, whether you agree with it or not, it's why your good heart for Jersey is taken at its own time to reopen, as it has. We're not the ones that make those judgments, these are state health authorities. As I said, it was a holiday, we were able to fortunately to get ahold of the county health authorities who are available for emergencies. I'm not sure anybody at the CDC was answering their website to engage in the conversation, but even so, they would have been given advice from a national perspective, not in light of New Jersey, except if they were just. So if you made a decision as best we could, do we have a policy saying that large groups shouldn't be huddling together without masks? Uh, no, we don't, we don't have a policy on a lot of things. What we made a decision that we felt on balance was better to do than nothing, it was with the health and safety of students in mind. I don't think anybody on the board has mentioned yet, but well, we understand it was not well received by, by the parents of the students if there were a fair amount of other folks in the school community who were very patient with the efforts we took to try to protect their children's health and safety. So, you know, we apologize for having to make a snap decision on a holiday with schools just starting a few hours away, we understand that we have said some folks, perhaps took away tradition and was unable, the folks were not happy about that. But I think the folks who made that decision on that Labor Day, which by the way, took about somewhere between three to five hours of ongoing discussion during the day, I think they stand by it, prepared for some negative criticism, of course, but that's as much as I can offer.
Can I go back?
I would just ask, have you been reading? Why was the, why did the senior class not, just not receive the letter? Why would it go out to 2,500 parents and alert everybody to that? It would have been much, a much better decision.
I don't agree with your decision at all. I don't feel you have a right to monitor their social media, I don't have a right to say, you can say what they can and can't do. Who's taking a picture of a mask? Nobody. I have so many pictures that I can send you, and if that's what you want to do, I'll do it. And I'm sure every other parent will do the same and then we're gonna be here every three days arguing over this. That's not what's it about, it's about getting children back in school. I would like to know that the board, the administration, the teachers union, that's their final goal and I don't feel that it is.
Could you just repeat the last piece, I didn't, I didn't hear the last part.
I don't, I don't feel that it's the board's, the administration, and the teachers union goal to get children back in school, of course.
I, I, I believe wholeheartedly it is the goal to get us back into school. Like I said, I know this upset people and I apologize. Our, every effort is going to try to create and get back to a sense of normalcy. The letter was sent out, it was decided to go out to everyone with safety being paramount and you were talking about children before. I have three children, one of which did get COVID and got very sick. This was sent out as, as an abundance of caution and I apologize to anyone that I offended in doing it. However, the decision was made and the letter was sent out and in no way, shape, or form does anyone here want to delay the opening of school. We want the children back and we want to get to a normal sense as quickly as we can and as safely as we can. And like I said, I know the letter offended some people and I apologize for that. I do not spend my time on Facebook looking for these things, this was not anything like that at all. And you have my word that that's not what is happening. And our goal is to get everyone back into school as quickly and as safely as we can.
Okay, but is, is the goal also, do you want to be notified of every picture that is on the internet in which people are not wearing a mask? I think you have to take a stand, it's not within the board of education's reach, it's not, it's not within the CDC's reach, it's not within the governor's reach, it's not, it's not within so many's people's reach, people's reach. The police would not even do anything if they saw those students together taking a picture. You get together and you disperse.
Ma'am, that is not, that is not our goal, ma'am, and as I said, I, I know that this upset people and I apologize for that, but our goal is not to do that at all.
In addition to that, it just caused a further ramification where a business, a local business in town was contacted and they were asked what they were going to do. and they were asked what they were going to do about students that frequently did their establishment that were part of the senior sorrows. Is that their business? The answer is no. I have one more question not related to the senior sorrows. It was on our understanding that as far as the bathrooms go, students were not going to be escorted to the bathroom in the high, at the high school level. That was in one of the board meetings. I'd like to know, can you hear me? Why, why that was changed? Because...
We're, we're not escorting, we're just monitoring so we don't have too many people in the bathroom. And if that is what's... Ma'am, can I finish, please? And if that's what is, you're telling me is what is happening, I will take care of it first thing in the morning.
The security is coming to the classroom and escorting the student to the bathroom and then escorting them back to the classroom. For me, that's a big problem. I have a female, seventeen-year-old female, and she does not to be monitored, be monitored totally.
I will, I will take care of that first thing in the morning.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
Hi, I'm Barb Maitoglu. I have a senior soros. And I just have a question about, so the hybrid, we discussed that we kind of thought we were getting something else and it's not what we're getting. I just am concerned that they're getting from, I'm looking at the schedule and it looks like they're getting twenty minutes every other day on a subject. And I just, I don't understand how an educator can think that that's going to educate a student if they're getting calculus for twenty minutes every other day.
They're, they're getting more than twenty minutes every other day is the most favorable. They're getting that content instruction every afternoon from the content room.
From the schedule that was given to me, maybe I don't have the right schedule. It looked like it was in the afternoon on Mondays, you're getting period one through four. Tuesday, you're getting periods five through eight. And then Wednesday, it's kind of like the morning you have something. And then it switches back to Thursday, you're getting periods one through four in the afternoon and period five through eight on Friday.
I'd have to look at the individual schedules.
Do you want to, do you want me to spray?
It's, I mean, I, I'm...
I just want to show you some of them.
Mr. Bombinier can call you in the morning specifically to discuss your individuals and...
No, that would be good because I really, you know, like I have a senior and he's not very forthcoming with what he's doing. It's kind of like, yeah, I'm in my room and my computer and whatever. So I kind of do want to know, like, when I looked online, that's the kind of schedule that I saw. And I thought, twenty minutes every other day, hardly anything with that. Like, it just, so I was concerned.
Again, in the morning, they're still blocking in, they're getting that direct instruction each morning. Then their morning is that independent practice with their primary teacher there. And in the afternoon, they're getting that direct instruction. So I can look at that individual's schedule tomorrow and look at this.
Ma'am, if you can repeat your name so I, so just so Mr. Bombinier can...
Maitoglu, M.A.I.T.O.G.L.O.U.
M.A.I. Okay, thank you.
And I'm glad that you brought up the fact that the math teacher, the calculus teacher. My son emailed his guidance counselor the day before school started because he couldn't find that teacher on Google Meet's and he couldn't find it under staff. And the guidance counselor was like, well, just email the teacher. But when my son came to me, he said, I said to the guidance counselor, I can't find this teacher under the staff and I can't find this teacher in Google Meet's. So how do I have a calculus teacher? So I'm glad that that was brought up because even before school starts, they should kind of be able to...
Absolutely. And I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I will address that in the morning. Although in some cases, we were getting changes up until the day school started. That was, that hasn't quite, I don't know if that's your particular situation. However, I'm certainly going to address that.
I found out on Facebook that the teacher was no longer part of the school and told my son, so he calmed down to, to understand that guy about.
Understood, so I'm, I'm going to take care of that in the morning and, but there were some cases where literally on the day before the first day of school, we were getting changes made as well. But I don't know if that was your son's particular situation, but it will be addressed right, right, first thing in the morning.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Eva Wernikin, and I had a whole student prepared. I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions. When was the decision made and how was the decision made to only have certain grades be in school for the hybrid model?
I believe that came up on August eighteenth. It was at that board meeting. But that's what happened in response to the executive order and Department of Health guidelines that came out the thirteenth. And then the nineteenth was the high school video.
So the executive order and the guidelines stated that you, you can only use a certain amount of classrooms in the school because there's a ton of empty classrooms. You have a bunch of grades out, not in school. There's, I'm getting reports, there's two people in the class, there's three people in the class, there's four people in the class. That's not eight or nine, anywhere near the ten that's supposed to be the maximum. So I don't, I'm concerned that there was outside pushback on having all the grades here. I, I just want to tell you all, I really appreciate everything that you're doing. It's not, it's not going unnoticed by most, by most parents that I've talked to. We are really surprised, surprised, pleasantly surprised that this is happening because we know what the state president and JBA person is saying. She's, we know what she said. We know what she said, and we know where they stand. So I have to commend you all for even providing this option to us because there are a lot of schools that just said, we're not doing it, whether it's because the teachers aren't willing to come in or whatever it was. So I, I do appreciate the effort. It's been a very hard diligent effort. I appreciate it.
Can I just get an answer?
Sure.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I, there's a question that I want. So on the eighteenth, I believe the, there were three areas that when the executive order came out and the Department of Health guidelines came out, that our plan that we had approved, or we could have two weeks earlier, we could not really see or understand how that would work and were very concerned that we would be violating sixty with masks. So those, if I recall correctly, it was the buses at the time. There was only eleven people allowed on the buses. It was coming to school, how that opening process would work, what would happen in the weather, where we, how do we control where the kids are. It was passing in the hallways, which for a hybrid, there would have to be some sort of passing. Interestingly, now, if you look at the news, we've seen other schools that have shut down because of the passing in the hallways because you couldn't properly contact trace. You could have gone anywhere. So the, and the coming with dismissal. So it was those three areas that caused concern that we were not proceeding with the same display. So there was, we listened to our teachers and their concerns. They listened to where the board's position was, which is we want our kids back in school and worked with the district to come up with this transitional hybrid plan, trying to get in as many kids as we could absolutely safely, which I think, thank God, we have. But that, that's really the route that we've taken. We are listening to each other, listening to the parents, and every day we're trying to tweak it so that we are planning for that October fifth day to include the rest of the grades.
Right, but I, my recollection is that those were mutually exclusive. The plan to, you know, with the wording of the executive order that changed it to from masks or social distancing to masks and social distancing, and the decision to include half of the grades were not connected. That's my timing, it doesn't seem to match up, but that's, that's fine, I'll, I'll accept that answer. I also want to thank the teachers because I know the teachers want to be in school with this kids. I know a lot of them do. But I also know that just from my daughter's experience, her economics teacher had a five-minute Google meeting, so twenty minutes is not happening. Five-minute Google meeting, gave five vocabulary words for an economics lesson and called it a day. I don't want to call out anybody. I know people are trying, I know it's really difficult, I get it. But that's not twenty, twenty minutes of instruction is not happening. I don't know who's checking to make sure that's happening. It's not happening. Another, another class, the teacher's computer died during the lesson. Not acceptable. Not acceptable. So this is the kinds of, and that's just me. My son, I have no idea when his classes are. This, this schedule that you have with the half the classes in the morning, half at night. I don't even, I don't see any meetings for him happening. I, I don't know if they're happening, I don't know when they're happening, but he needs to be here. He's in tenth grade and he can't, he's not a kid that's, no. He's not my daughter. My daughter will do whatever she has to do to be done at school and go to college, but hopefully things will be much better. But that was basically my, my main question. I just really want to ask you all to keep our children as a priority because I'm telling you, I know what the pilots that we are saying and I, I want you to consider the kids and their education and their well-being and their social well-being so that they can do activities, extracurriculars, athletics, and not, I mean, you, we're willing to provide childcare. I know you went above and beyond to get teachers in the school. I don't know that, I think the reason why content teaching isn't happening, because that's not happening either. That's not happening. There's like, there could be a gym teacher with, you know, four kids in a class and they're supposed to ask them about lessons. They're not taking the classes in the school. They're not on computers learning. That's, that's what I'm getting from a lot of parents. It, it's a study hall. So is it because teachers are not willing to come in? You know, I, I, we just really need more transparency so we, we don't get upset and cause rumors and, and start problems. We just need transparency and like I said, I, I know the feeling of the organization. So I want to make sure that, that the children do not become the chess pieces in this chuckleboard.
Thank you, and that sermon is, is shared by this board, which is why we've been able to keep our kids and get our kids in the school. It is our goal and we will continue to stay that course until we are able to get them all back in as much as we can. There are things that are out of our control and when that happens, the public will know. But we are doing everything we can to work with both our unions to make sure that they are respected their needs and concerns are respected, as obviously also prioritizing our children. On this board, we have a fair amount of parents who have kids who are going through this as well. And it's, it's not easy. The goal of starting the year as we did, minus some of the nuanced chaos, was to get kids used to seeing their building with a mask on, being in the places they're used to, but not in the same way, and getting that emotional stability back. So I can only say that, you know, throughout my, the last six years, I have, and I'll use graduation as an example, there was a point in time where there was a lot of negativity because people felt there was nothing being done for the seniors or we wouldn't have a graduation. And this administration, along with the board, with this administration pushed through to make sure that our kids got what they deserved and what they needed. Not only we had an in-person high school graduation, but also a junior high. It may not be perfect and we may have bumps and I may fall in the ditch every now and then. I, I will take ownership of anything that I could have done better and I promise you I will do my best to learn from it and explain things slower and taking the time to make sure that I don't just understand it as a board president, but also as a parent. It's something that I have to really remember and I've been so reminded, believe it. So I, I do apologize for that. But I, I know even from watching my kids who are in the district, both in the high school. My son had a content teacher today. Some people did, some people didn't. Math teacher that came in, that rotated in, wasn't his math teacher, but because there were length graders knew that content, he was able to ask questions. So it's not perfect, but we are absolutely striving for it to be perfect as best we can get it. And we are working with our teachers. They, and I just want to be clear, I openly talking about the teachers and really with everybody, everybody's shoes that we've been walking through, the parents, the principals, the administration, because of all the scheduling changes, because of parents choosing virtual at the last minute or wanting to see if we could get them into hybrid at the last minute, the teachers got their schedules later than they would have wanted to. And there's a lot of prep that they normally would have gotten had we been able to get them what they needed to be in and walk. And that was to no fault of this district, to no fault of this administration, but the script flipped. And we have forced these teachers to, to adjust very quickly. We obviously were very focused on improving things, so I, I get it. And all I can say is, you know, we've proven to come out on top in the past. Just give us some time and I think they will be maybe not extremely happy. I don't expect anybody to take me out for lunch, but I think they'll be satisfied.
I just, thank you very much for that. I just have two more questions. So I would expect that on October fifth, the rest of the kids will be in school. Is that correct understanding?
No, no.
Okay. And also, I believe the question that was being asked before was misunderstood. The, I understand that cohorts are split alphabetically, but from my understanding and what I've heard from parents, the classrooms are alphabetical, so there's no chance of four people that are in the same class in the same subject area being in a class. It's just by last name. That, that's what it sounds like. So I understand the cohorts are being split alphabetically. But I have heard from parents that in the specific classroom, that's supposed to be people taking the same class. So for example, if you have calculus, every child in that classroom, whether it's two, three, or four, five kids, they're all taking calculus and the teacher comes in and maybe it's not their calculus teacher, but it's supposed to be a math teacher. I mean, really, it was told that it was supposed to be their calculus teacher and they were going to say, here's how you do calculus and the kids were going to learn. That's not what's happening, we know that, and we're going to hopefully get there soon. But I'm under, the understanding that there are just people in the class together by last name and they're in all different content subjects, they're just randomly, I mean, by last name. They're placed in a classroom so they can be in a classroom together, but they're not in a, in period one math class.
So they, they're scheduled based on, to ensure they get all of their courses and they're getting scheduled that they've decided on. So in terms of the order of the classes, I can speak with Mr. Eiler about that, but the classes are arranged where they get a content area teacher. They can't have all of the students in that subject area together just by sheer numbers. So that's why the students are grouped together in a classroom. And then by not having the transitions, that's why we can't have all of the students in that calculus class in one room together.
Okay, so there's a plan for that because if you have a kid in math and one in science and one in reading, you know, English and one in social studies and those four kids are in the same class, you don't have four teachers in those four content areas in the class, obviously. So that has to get figured out, right? I think that's it. Thank you very, very much for your time. Again, I really appreciate the teachers who are making efforts to, to try to get creative and teach the kids as a bunch. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for people who are here? If we can, can we go on to the live, to our chat? I can't see that, so that's here later.
Okay. So we're going to, I'm going to read off the chat comments, starting out. Starting off with a user by the name of Amy. My daughter had none, not one of her teachers in her room or teachers that even taught her in the content area. She was in a room with two other girls only and not in her class. It was affecting her emotionally. Also, the Wi-Fi wasn't working. Had to switch her from hybrid to, to remote for her well-being.
You ready for it?
It's just difficult to see what class is talking on. Next question is by Lynn Merson. Will hybrid students be taught by their teachers in small classrooms in the first quarter?
That's where we are now, and we look to come October 5th to transition back with additional students in. And with transitions in place, the schedule will look different. So that is our goal.
Similar question from, from Ms. Levitt. Will students be taught in school by their actual teachers as they are assigned?
And they do get that instruction. It may not be that live instruction in person, but they get that instruction either via that Google Meet or in the afternoon time.
Question by Ms. Samantha Mallinger. I know that there are things, but when can the high school students doing hybrid expect in live instruction? It was conveyed to us that they would receive live teaching, and now we're being told that they need to come up with questions. Some of the teachers didn't even introduce themselves. This is not acceptable.
Some teachers should be introducing themselves. We do, I think we all agree with that. We will get to that specifically. And we talked about the live instruction that is taking place. The frequency right now, given the limitation, isn't as frequent as we want to be, but we are looking to enhance that as we move forward and are able to have transition within the school that will allow for more direct instruction.
Comment by Jen. How are they getting to know their teachers when teachers are not interacting with their students in that room? We should probably address that. Another comment by a user named Amy. There was no live instruction going on, but daughter was given two science teachers and a business teacher. She takes no classes within any of those subject areas. So how is that helpful for her when the content areas do not match? The live lessons are the same, whether the student is following instruction. We should probably address that as well. Question by Ms. Raven Cole. Can you please repeat what the audience member was asking? I think we addressed that with the microphone, so we probably have to use Cole for that technical difficulty. Another comment and question by Ms. Samantha Mallinger. There was no connection to students in the building. They can do instruction on Google Meet from home. What can my son get out of having three science teachers in his class during this time there?
So right, right now that model is there's a teacher in there, a content certified teacher in the classroom. And that right now is because we do not have the students transitioning to their specific rooms. It cannot have a full class size of every student. So that goes back to that academic support model in the morning versus interactive live instruction that's taking place via the Google Meet.
Couple more comments by a user named Amy. That is a complete lie that you're staying. Content errors are not happening in every room. You only put safety concerns in the forefront, but education was the afterthought. Jen, another question by a user named Jen. What is the plan for live interactive teaching? You have an outline, a tentative date, so you can share with us.
So there is live teaching taking place. That right now, that is through the Google Meet. And then once we are able to have students move around the building safely, then we do look to increase that.
Another follow-up question by Ms. Merson. So high school students will not be taught by the teachers in small groups in the morning, correct? Only maybe eventually if restrictions change.
Either content, so they may not have their content area teacher, their teacher of record in the morning. That is correct. And as we look to have more students come into the building and students transition, that is our goal.
Mr. McDonner kind of seconded the comment about a phone call in reference to the schedule. So Mr. Donner here will pass on per phone number to you after the meeting. Is there a plan of, excuse me. Next comment by Ms. Hart. Is there a plan to group the kids by class or because of the transition that can't happen?
Well, right now, we cannot have that because we cannot have more than X number of students in a classroom. And without having a teacher's transition, a student's transition, that is why we have the current model in place at the high school level.
And then final question by Ms. Melissa. I have been with my son during the Google Hangout meets. What interventions are you having in place to ensure these meets are longer than 20 minutes? I have seen them, and it's short amount.
And typically, the Google Meet is about 20 minutes. After that, the students, especially depending on the level, is typically if the teacher was teaching in a classroom, they would not be providing direct instruction for more than 20 minutes. It would be small groups, and there would be independent practice throughout that lesson. So just to know the level of student engagement, especially in virtual setting, some of that is intentional that we're not keeping students on a Google Meet for live direct instruction longer than 20 minutes at, at one period of time.
And then follow-up to, from a user named Melissa. For elective courses, like shop, students have not received any live or Google Meet teaching at all. As their Wi-Fi is out, how is this an acceptable form of instruction? What accountability do these teachers have to ensure that the appropriate instruction is taking place?
So we, we said we are aware of the Wi-Fi, any student that, and login issues that took place, and we have addressed those. Student passwords have been reset. And that is our goal, to ensure that every student has Wi-Fi access. And as discussed earlier, there is accountability in place, and we will continue to monitor and make sure that that instruction is taking place within the first week of school. The application wasn't that we would dive right into the instruction, and that was by design. So as we now proceed in our second week and move ahead, more live direct instruction will take place, but we want the students and teachers to take some time to get to know one another in that first, at least the first week of school.
Well, thank you, Ms. Mallinger. So that concludes the Zoom chat comments. There are at least three or four emails from the public comments email app. We'll start off with Ms. Donnelly. I'm just going to read each one of them with a few sentences, so I'll just read the whole thing, and then I'll send it over to Ms. Mallinger and address it. I wanted to get some more information as to the plan in regards to the hybrid program. In the earlier discussions at these meetings, you had advised that the children would have in-person instruction while in the buildings. However, things change rapidly without any discussion from the parents. Could you please advise that the plan is to start in-person instruction? Will the teacher actually be teaching live? There is no reason for the children to be in school if they have to be on computers personally learning class. Please understand that as a parent, I am sending my child to school to learn. That is the only reason my child is going. They are sitting in a classroom with masks on. If it is not to learn by a live teacher, then what is the point? They can do that at home without a mask. I look forward to hearing about the plan to give these children an opportunity to learn.
We discussed that, and we, we look to enhance that as we look forward, as we look for that children fit, and we look to have more opportunities for students to transition and have more direct instruction with their content area teacher.
Next set of comments questions are by Ms. Cruz Tanner. There was communication in meetings passed with regards to upstate grading to ensure that parents were aware of real-time academic standing of their student. There are numerous instructions we have to put longer in. How are we to ensure that our kids aren't left behind or lapping if the instructors aren't providing enough with the information necessary to make that call? Also, these live teaching Google meets are extremely crowded. There's over 30 students in the meet. How do you feel that's a productive, that's productive for an instructor to teach while everyone is talking? How is an instructor supposed to know who needs help if she then puts everyone on mute? Transparency that is supposed to curtail of the virtual realm is not present.
So at this point, we've only had two days of school in person, and so we do not expect grades to be in the grade book at this time. As we proceed now into our second week and subsequent weeks, grade will be in the parent portal. And then the other questions regarding the line instruction and sacredness, maybe.
Why are we being emailed to pick up supplies, i.e. workbooks for our students after the first week of class? I'm only committed to have one day for pickups, especially when this is directed towards virtual-only students.
So each principal is coming up with a schedule for pickup of supplies and materials. However, if many parents need an alternate time, they should reach out to their building principal. I know different schools have different windows and different days for students that parents have to go there. Would that, they should direct that to the building principal if they need alternate time.
How can we justify live teaching to minimal amount that they are obtaining when we're at a Google Meet? How is it expected for these teachers to ensure that students absorb the information through minimal follow-up to ensure understanding?
And that's, we have their teacher's office hours, their teacher's small group supports in the afternoon, and that is designed for those individual and small group supports, knowing that a Google Meet with their students is really not effective to remove individual meeting students, which is why there are smaller breakouts and that support time in the afternoon.
What interventions are being done for the junior class to obtain the tools necessary to assist them with college prep and selection guidance? What plan is being set up for dads, aunts to make contact, to provide support, both juniors and seniors during this period?
That information will be forthcoming from the high school. That will take place most likely virtually. But those will be set up just like any other year. They will have those same supports and same opportunities to lead with their conversation.
And last email from Ms. Stevenson. I'm very concerned that students are going to be getting enough learning time in their teachers. I'm also concerned that some of the high school teachers are having a hard time teaching their lessons in the amount of time given, and they're not holding their own meetings during random times. This is a problem because students are in their own, in their other classes. Also, the schedules are so confusing that many children are having a very hard time following it.
So that is something that I would say they should reach out to their building principal. They need clarification on their schedule. I think it has been said, we understand we are going through our first week of school, and as we continue, we secure the feedback. We will continue to make changes.
That concludes the email portion.
And I have one shout out that we no longer have a public, or just no longer have a public. So they have left, but I think there may have been, I've seen this Martinez, there's more chat, there's more chat.
Yeah, I have. Sorry, I read those, I read those comments on my screen, so.
Oh, the bathroom?
This last one's not there.
Oh, the bathroom.
Yeah, that came right.
Okay. So the last question, following up, a user named Jen. High school students, I think that's where to use the bathrooms and back to class. The student, yeah, I'm not going to read that comment because it's relating to a person, a personal privacy record of the students. And basically, the summary of it is that the students cannot always wait because of medical necessities.
And I, as I said before, I hope to address that with the schools first thing in the morning.
So can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
One second. I just want to make a comment. I just want to let, since we don't have a public here, it's normal for people at home to know that we are parents. I have four children in the district. My children have similar complaints as far as the bathroom, the classroom, the teacher's not teaching, situation with the bus. We might have similar complaints, but as Mr. Donner here stated, that this is the first week. We're all doing something new, and we just got to have patience with it. But I feel like, it's almost like sometimes like we don't have students, and we have students at the senior, and our freshmen are able to go to school, but I have a sophomore, and I have a fifth grader that cannot go to school. So I'm putting two children out the door and having two children at home, along with my grandchildren, which I also have to teach at home. So it's not that anybody's dismissing anybody's concerns. We all have concerns, but we just got to learn to be a little patient.
Thank you.
Ms. Raven, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that I, I feel as if people feel that we had more of a choice than we did. We're following an executive order. We were trying to stay within so many different guidelines, all of which keep the kids and staff safe. It's just frustrating because I feel like sometimes I think some of this was choice. And I know if it was all up to all of us, we would be back in school. We would be back to normal. Everything would be okay. So it's just frustrating sitting here, hearing, or what I think I'm hearing, is people not understanding that sometimes in some of the instances, we didn't have a choice. So I just want people to understand that it's not about education necessarily. It's, it's our safety of our kids, and of course, our education is important, but not if the kids are not safe. So I just want people to understand that we get it. We want everything back to normal, but we're doing what we have to do to follow by law.
Any other board member want to say anything? And I'm kind of looking out in the virtual end. Does Kevin have his hand up? All, all right, so, okay. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
How many?
Can I get a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.